Good evening. It is 6:30, March 25th, and I'm going to call the meeting to order. With that, Mr. Halliwell, you lead us in our invocation, please.
The power to take away, and it's just, it's an amazing thing to have in your hands. And we're so glad that everything has been decided by you for every good and perfect gift is from above, from the Father of Lights, with whom there is no variables or shadow of turning, as you've told us in the Book of James. We thank you so much that we can depend on you, that we can count on you. We thank you so much for this council that I have the honor of serving, and the staff I have the honor of serving with. I pray that you would watch over the council, protect them, take care of them as they look and do what is the best. Give them the wisdom of Solomon, as they choose the course for the city and what is best for the citizens. We ask you to bless this day, and it's your son's name we pray. Amen.
All right. With that, that takes us to item number three, our agenda approval. If there's no changes on the agenda, I will let it move as normal. If not, please make that statement now.
I move to approve as it is polished.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. So that unanimous. So Rules of Decorum is up next, so it is a full house. Lot of stuff on the agenda tonight. Let's just be mindful that we'll be respectful to you, and we ask that you be respectful back to the diocese as well as amongst one another. We're all grown, so let's just, let's just get through the meeting in the best way we can, and that's being kind. With that, that will bring us to citizens' comments. And I will ask that we keep it two, three minutes, because we have quite a few tonight. Angela will set a timer when the time goes. Try to wrap it up within about five to 10 seconds of that, so we don't go too long. First up is Mr. Bob Fattick.
Bob Fattick, 1156 Plaurno, McLendon Chisholm. I want to start by thanking Mayor McLendon, Hunter McNeil, and Councilman Brewer for their efforts to advance the community and always being open and transparent with the public. The citizens have taken note of your efforts. On this evening's agenda is item number 9.1. Quote, "Discuss a resolution declaring a vote of no confidence, the mayor of City McLendon," end quote. When I read this, I was shocked, because the only resolution declaring a no vote should be for Mr. Tucker, Day, Easter, and McLendon. Your inability as councilman has been shown over the last year, especially over the last several months. Your reckless spending of taxpayers' money, talking to the water attorneys on a Denny issue, has shown you do not understand or listen to the citizens. Your lack of fiduciary responsibility was quite evident in the last city council meeting when you did not pass a single simple item that was on the agenda. Mr. Tucker, your lack of knowledge of simple, robust rules of order on how to conduct meetings were quite evident. Mr. Day, I have to say, you wanted the best city councilman in grandstanding. You talk in circles, and it seems to accomplish nothing. Mr. Easter, you're constantly siding with Mr. Tucker and Mr. Day, showing the citizens your lack of leadership. Mr. McLendon, you shocked us last meeting by speaking instead of your usual "I have nothing." Well, what you contributed was nothing as usual. In conclusion, on item 9.1, go back to the drawing board and insert Mr. Tucker, Mr. Day, Mr. Easter, and Mr. McLendon, and remove Mayor McNeil's name. Doing this will make the citizens of McLendon Chisholm happy. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up is John Warham.
John Warham, 1515 Rapaso Way. I'm also here to speak on 9.1. So what is a popular mandate? It's when a candidate wins an election with a clear majority of votes. They may claim a mandate to enact the policies they campaigned on, believing that the voter's support gives them the legitimacy to do so. Pay attention, guys, because you don't get this. A mandate is a social construct based on what is understood to be the will of the voters. Mayor McNeil was elected in '24 with an 8.4% of the vote, as was Jerry Brewer. A landslide victory that sent a clear message that he had the confidence of the voters, and his opponent did not, and represented a continuation of the prior council, did not have that confidence. In contrast, Mr. McLendon was elected in May '23, running unopposed. Tucker was elected in May '23 with 57.7% of the votes, not a landslide, not a mandate. Day backfilled Jennifer Huffman, who left office after eight months into her term, and then was re-elected in May '24, unopposed. Easter elected in May '24, also unopposed. Every council meeting I've been to has been attended overwhelmingly by supporters of the mayor. Probably a lot of all these people behind me. Mayor McNeil has the mandate, and he has the support of the citizens. You guys don't listen. He has our support. You don't. So after he was sworn in, Mayor McNeil put forward a plan to solve the biggest issue our city faces, the water supply. For their part, Tucker, Day, Easter, and McLendon formed a resistance and have opposed his efforts ever since, without having produced a cohesive plan of your own. If you've done it, you haven't communicated it, so it doesn't exist. Mayor McNeil also ran on a promise of transparency. In support of that promise, and so people are made aware of the lack of progress on the water issue, is due to the resistance he's made direct outreach to the community via social media, since most citizens don't attend this meeting. Getting the truth out in the open benefits all. If you feel his comments are not truthful, put out a rebuttal. In conclusion, the resistance lacks the mandate, has failed to provide an actionable solution to the biggest problem facing the city, and has not shown themselves to be transparent, preferring executive session to open discussion on difficult topics. This is why, when other candidates contested their seats this May, Tucker, Day, McLendon wisely opted not to run for reelection. This is clearly a last-ditch effort for a payback smear against the mayor, a parting shot. Decent people don't like dirty tactics, and we have long memories.
Thank you, Mr. Warham. Next up will be Robert Ryan.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Robert Ryan, and I'm a resident of McLendon Chisholm, located at 1082 Chisholm Ridge Drive. I would like to address Agenda Item 9.1 regarding the proposed resolution for a vote of no confidence in the mayor. According to the Texas Open Meetings Act, specifically Government Code Section 551-074, personnel matters that can be discussed in executive session do not include elected officials. The Attorney General has made it clear, and legal precedent confirms that elected officials such as the mayor are not considered employees or officers for the purpose of closed-session discussions. Therefore, this item cannot lawfully be discussed in executive session. Any deliberation about a vote of no confidence in the mayor must be held in open session in full view of the public, as required by law. I respectfully urge the council to ensure transparency and full compliance with the Open Meetings Act. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Rich Dean.
Rich Dean, 708 Kensington Drive, McLendon Chisholm. I had some thoughts on 8.4. I think I can just summarize it by saying, why? Why are we going to do something in the next month and a half to give more work to Bev and Angela?
I actually thought they'd do a good job reading the agenda without passion or bias, but that's neither here nor there. But I would only ask, why are we going to make that change now? Doesn't make any sense to me. Regarding 9.1 on the executive session agenda, I wish you'd have spent some time railing the citizens of McLendon Chisholm to come out and vote for the city charter on May 3rd. With the ability to recall elected officials, something can actually get done, as opposed to behind closed doors discussion followed by kangaroo court so that our city council can tell us they don't have confidence in Mayor McNeil. You know, we were wondering if that is what you thought. Since we're on, since I am on the subject of Mayor McNeil, I would be remiss if I did not say that Mayor Brian McNeil is the best thing that has happened to McLendon Chisholm in a while. His energy, his coalescing of surrounding municipalities as a united front, his work to get the ideals of McLendon Chisholm in front of the state legislature, and his openness and willingness to work for the people of McLendon Chisholm are going to be tough to duplicate. Thank you, Mayor McNeil, for your service. I'm glad we have already had a no-confidence vote. It was last May, when 80% of the people of McLendon Chisholm said they do have confidence in Mayor McNeil. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dean. Next up is Tom Milner.
I'm Tom. I'm Tom Milner. I reside at 641 Glen Acres Drive. And I'm also here to discuss Agenda Item 9.1. And in my view, Mayor McNeil has been the most active and involved mayor that has been here in my 18 years as a resident. Last year during the big storms that downed hundreds of trees, and lots of the city was without power, Mayor McNeil was working with Encore, day and night, walking through the trees, walking through the weeds, finding bad spots for them to work on, and communicating it to the residents. I don't recall seeing any of the rest of you guys there. But in my view, this mayor has been more than involved and very active in supporting the residents of this city. So in my view, it should be a full-confidence vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Milner. Dennis London.
Good evening, mayor, council, city staff, and residents of McLendon Chisholm. Thank you all for coming out, and those that are watching online. My name is Dennis London, 216 Harvest Ridge Drive. And tonight, Councilman Tucker with 9.1 is planning to introduce this so-called "vote of no confidence" against our mayor. This motion, let me just tell everybody, it's political theater, nothing more. There's no legal standing to it, there's no force, and it certainly has no credibility. Because if there's anyone who's lost the confidence of the people, it's not Mayor McNeil. It's you, Mr. Tucker, and the crew that you've been running with these last few months. You're the ones who pushed to terminate the RCH water agreement without a real backup plan. You left the city exposed financially and logistically. You forced our residents to flip the legal bill from both sides. Thank you. We saw that on our recent water bills. You and your allies ignored the guidance of the city attorney and our water attorney and took the cues from an undisclosed source who doesn't even represent the city. You've shown more respect for that individual than you did for the citizens you supposedly serve. It's not leadership. It's arrogance. It's contempt for the public. And now you want to turn around and pretend you're taking a moral stand? Let's also not pretend this is about protecting the city. Because if our charter had already passed, we'd have had the tools to recall you and your crew months ago, and you know it. You've heard it here during the comments. The people, they've given up. They don't trust you. Now let's talk about real leadership. Mayor McNeil has brought integrity, accountability, and transparency back to City Hall. He's listening to the people. He's refusing to cave to developer pressure, and he's spending real time in Austin, working with legislators to protect our city from harmful policies. I should know. I've been there with him. I watched him speak to senators. I heard him tell the Senate Committee Chairman that passing the ADU bill would literally destroy his city. This wasn't a soundbite. It was a moment of truth, one of the most impactful statements that was made that day. And it wasn't about him. It was about the people of McLendon Chisholm. Meanwhile, you guys have been trying to block him from even having those conversations, from keeping residents informed and from doing his job. And then you have the gall to claim you lack confidence in his leadership. No, the people lack confidence in yours. So let's not waste any more time on this phony vote. It's not real, it's not enforceable, and it's not going to fool anyone. The real vote has already happened at the ballot box, when over 80% of the city rejected the 13.255 asset land grab scheme. And the next one is coming in May, when our charter gets passed, and real accountability comes back to McLendon Chisholm. From here I'm standing, the people are with you, Mayor McNeil, and you, Councilman Tucker, are the one who's out of line. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. London. Next up is Jennifer Eldrith.
Based on Agenda Item 9.1, the resolution to declare a vote of, Jen Eldrith, 601 Barglin, declare a vote of no confidence in our mayor, it appears your intention is to jab him on your way out. The same mayor who was elected with the highest voter turnout in our city's history and who has maintained more confidence with the citizens than there has ever been afforded to a city council member or mayor in my 10 years as a resident of the city. He has helped elderly neighbors cut trees after storms, has forced Encore to take steps to stop our constant power failures. He's headed to the scene of a deadly accident and made sure our neighbor, who was tragically widowed, was okay. He's represented our city by checking in on the family and honoring a Marine POW neighbor who passed away. And that's a small snippet of what he's done that goes above and beyond his mayoral role. He's been an exemplary citizen and mayor for our city. What were you doing during that time? I know it's a big ask for some of you, who have taken an opportunity at every turn to circumvent our mayor, but I ask that you reflect on the fact that each of you are choosing to be a stain on the reputation of our city. Some of your names are regularly mentioned with disdain in our county's restaurants, front yards, gas stations, and even our churches. That's just embarrassing. Your names are spoken so often, I can only assume this is a last-ditch attempt to sow discourse, because your ears are simply burning. Any good you may have brought to our city continues to be canceled out by your behavior during your tenure in office, when you're supposedly representing our city. Your open arrogance and disdain for the will of the citizens has been on full display for those who come to the meetings, but even more so for the people who watch online and share your shame from one neighbor to the next. Such incident as disregarding our mayor's function in setting the agenda, telling citizens to sit the F down from the diocese, requiring a sheriff's officer to sit the F down from the dais, requiring a sheriff's officer on-site to maintain peace between you because you simply cannot, the water situation that our citizens are now funding both sides of a fight we actively asked you not to create. Should you choose the action to declare a vote of no confidence tonight, your actions will follow you after your time on the dais and will continue to reflect on your names in our community and beyond. Shame on those of you who, rather than doing the job you were elected to do, let personal vendettas lead your actions. Make the right choice tonight and do it in front of the citizens, not behind the wall of executive session like Howard's. Redeem yourself from the shame you continue to put on your own names as well as the name of our city. It's never too late to do the right thing.
Mr. Dave Black?
I'm sorry, I can't follow that, that was really good. Seriously, I like what the mayor's done by working with other mayors and with the county to have a united front, because the Senate and the House in Austin are going to be causing trouble, I'm afraid, and we need all the voices we can get. And he is the most active mayor I've ever seen, so that's nice, because it's good activity, unlike others that don't have very good activity, if they have any at all. But I can't really say anymore.
Tom Ritz?
Tom Ritz, I live up the road in Kingsbridge. I'm going to start off with a little quotation, it's kind of an old quotation. Quosque tandem pacientsem abutere catalina. Now, that was Cicero, that was my junior year in high school. He wrote an oration because he couldn't stand the guy. He was, Catalina was a bugbear to all the rest of the Roman Senate. Well, it kind of fits here, except I'm not going to say Catalina, I'm just going to say factless four. And I only have one word for you, and it echoes what Jennifer said, it's never too late to do the right thing. Resign.
Thank you, Mr. Holler, for bringing the humor. Next up, Tim Richards.
Wasn't sure quite what I wanted to say tonight, but as I was kind of praying and thinking about the last few months since I've been coming to these meetings. First of all, I moved here about two and a half years ago from Southern California. I'm a first responder there, and I live here, and I commute back and forth. The reason I say that is because, one of the reasons why I left is because I was looking for something different, and I found it. And I think, more than anything, I think Mr. McNeil and Mr. Brewer, you represent what I was looking for. That small town feel, very welcome, easy to talk to. And I think most of us, I think, I'm not going to speak for everybody, but I think most people would agree. And the reason I bring that up is because when I heard about Section 9.1, I was really kind of taken aback. And I want to read something to you, it was also written a long time ago, a little bit longer than yours. "Arrogance leads to nothing but strife, but wisdom is gained by those who take advice." And so I'm not preaching to you, I'm just giving you some great wisdom from David, who I'm sure all of you know, King David. And I think one of the things that's great to take away from this is, this is already tried and tested. Take the advice to the people that you represent. You took an oath to serve us and to represent our needs and our wishes, and you're not doing that. And I think it's clear by everybody here, and I would appreciate that you take some time and you really think about your next steps. It's not a threat. What I'm asking you to do is apply some common sense and think about, all these people have other things to be doing than sitting in a city council meeting, so that we can tell you that this gentleman right here is doing what we want him to do. And what you're doing is just taking away from what we've asked you to be doing, which is the business of the city, and this isn't it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Richards. Next up is Gary Nichol.
Gary Nichol, 612 Kentwood. I'll be brief. Mayor McNeil has shown by his actions since his time in office that he takes his job serious, seriously, and he works for the people who elected him. The rest of you, I'm sure, had good intentions when you took the job, but your actions since then have not adequately represented what we expected. This flurry of punitive activity at the end of your term is disappointing, to say the least. It's embarrassing, and it's unfortunate, and I hope that we can find a better way to work. This is not the way we run our, not the way we want our city run, and we prefer that you follow the lead that the citizens have given and made their points clear enough to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nichol. Mr. Mark Kipit?
Mark Kipit, 31 Fireside Drive. I want to address two items, 8.3 and 9.1. 8.3 is laughable. It's yet another weak-minded attempt to criticize the mayor and bring harm to his reputation. Instead, it displays a stunning level of ignorance. Our mayor attended a mayor's conference in Washington, DC to advocate on our behalf, and then he's traveled to Austin three times to meet with our state representatives and others in the legislature to argue on our behalf against the efforts by the 89th Legislative Session that want to remove local control and local decision-making. Austin seems that they want to be in a position to better govern us rather than us governing ourselves through a one-size-fits-all with the Texas cities, and Brian has been passionately arguing why that is not the right answer. He's working tirelessly to help us maintain our liberties and our freedoms. Several of you on council are very close to our newly-elected state representative. My question is, what have you done to inform her and hold her accountable for her vote on legislation that will restrict our local decision-making here in McLendon Chisholm? It's a question. We don't want high density, we want to keep our rural country look and feel, and tragically there are so many, too many, non-so-called conservatives in Austin who are trying to take that all away. While Brian is dedicating his time and effort to stop that from happening, your thank you is to nitpick his expenditures. It's tragic. On 9.1, I had more to say, but I think folks have said it far better than I could. There's just simply no formal mechanism for a no-confidence vote in the United States. It doesn't have legal standing in Texas. It's used in parliamentary systems to force elections, but we are a constitutional republic. We have regularly scheduled elections. So 9.1 is nothing but pure political theater. It's wasting our time, and we're tired of it. Instead, we choose character association using a process behind closed doors in executive session, 45 days before this council leaves office. Welcome to Hotel California. I am requesting a ruling by the city attorney on legality of this action item, right, agenda item, before allowing the council to adjourn into executive session, or for the mayor to pro tem to have the courage to hold discussion in open session. Either way, it's our benefit because we've already done our vote of no confidence in the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kipit. Sheri London?
Sheri London, 216 Harvest Ridge, and first of all, I'd like to correct the record, it is 38 days until we have a fresh city council. I'm here to address the absolute hypocrisy of the mayor pro tem's proposal to restrict travel reimbursements and require prior council approval for anything over $300. Let's be clear, they want our mayor to wait for a city council meeting to request their approval to spend more than $300 for travel. Really? Why now? I seem to remember a recent city council, including current council member McLendon, that spent over $5,400 of taxpayer money to attend a two-day Texas Municipal League Conference in Dallas, less than 30 miles away. Some of our residents make that drive every day, but that council, they build the city for hotel stays on our dime, and not a single resolution was proposed to stop them. They even submitted food expenses despite several emails from the then-city administrator at the time showing vendors who were providing free meals and social events, and yes, I have those emails. So let's get this straight, they could spend thousands on hotels and meals in Dallas, but now that we have a mayor who's traveling to Austin and Washington for actual city business, not boondoggles, they suddenly want to clamp down? It's laughable. The hypocrisy is off the charts, and it doesn't stop there. Just for this meeting, our city administrator was asked to spend 150 more taxpayer dollars to get a copy of the court ruling in the RCH case. Let's see, I was there, Dennis was there, Mayor McNeil was there, Councilman Brewer was there, our finance manager was there, our city administrator was there, and even Councilman-elect Powers was there. Who wasn't there? Nobody on the Water Committee was there, and you wouldn't need the court ruling if you'd just shown up to hear it yourselves. Folks, this agenda item isn't about money, it's about control. They can't control Mayor McNeil, and it's driving them crazy. Just to pile on, they've added on this vote of no confidence, a meaningless symbolic stunt against our mayor with zero legal effect. And for the trifecta of time wasters on tonight's agenda, Councilman Day is also targeting the mayor's popular video updates tonight, and might I remind you, Councilman Day, that you're perfectly free to make your own videos if you think anyone would watch them. So let's just call this what it is, yet another embarrassing power play. They're the group that's lost our confidence, and they know it, because not one of them ran for reelection. Now they're just knocking over the furniture on their way out the door. So make no mistake, we can see what you're doing, we're just not buying it. May can't come soon enough, 38 days.
Thank you, Ms. London. Elaine Reynolds?
Elaine Reynolds, 851 South Highway 205. I believe the citizens that voted Mayor McNeil in office had, we have all the confidence in his ability, and citizens, and Councilman Brewer also, but the rest of you, there's no confidence in any of you. I don't know why y'all keep doing things that are not good for the city. Mayor McNeil is the first mayor that has been transparent with the citizens when there were problems, like in the storms, even with the brakes, the poles down, road issues, the dam breaking, he was there, he was out helping and keeping us updated. He has met with other Rockwall County mayors to have county come together, and yes, he's made some trips for our benefit, because they're trying to take away the local control. And I think he's doing everything he should. So that's all I have to say. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Elaine. Lorna Kipit?
Lorna Kipit, 31 Fireside Drive. Before I start my comments, I want to preface them with the fact that I was a city council member from May of 2019 to May of 2023. So when I speak today, it's with total understanding of what it means to be a city council member. I understand what it means to be judged by the court of public opinion. However, I feel it's imperative for the community to understand the negative impact the actions of this council will have on this city for years to come. I am not understating that fact. I also would like to talk about Item 9.1. Where is the background, the foundation, the legalities and the law behind this stand? Nothing has been provided to the public, to the commoner, me, I use the British term, we're not a parliament, and we function as a democracy. This seems just like an effort to embarrass the mayor. I'm not being flippant when I say Marines do not embarrass, nor do we want them to be embarrassable, so I doubt if this ploy has been successful, as you can see from the turnout in this room. No confidence? Why not recap what this council and mayor has done since the mayor's been in office? I'll highlight just four, and it's not all the work in Glen Acres, I'm glad y'all covered that. The Chisholm Crossing Dam, the mayor cut through red tape with our county and the state to get that dam taken care of. Any other mayor would have said, hey, that's a HOA problem, you guys, you know, you have to deal with it on your own, but you worked it. The city charter, Jerry, your detailed efforts of you and the charter commission that was completed on schedule, but it almost got derailed because a couple of council members thought they could dictate to the commission. Nobody's mentioned the Greenshow Left Turn Arrow at 205 and 550. That's been in the works since 2021. I tried to work it, I was not successful, but guess what? Mayor McNeil had the tenacity to get this job done. Edwards Road, not a simple repair, but extensive negotiations with the county and the developers in Sonoma Verde. Who did this? Mayor McNeil, I keep wanting to say major and promote you. So, to go forward with this nonsensical no-confidence is ludicrous and just continues to highlight the debacle of inefficiency. I'm going to talk quick because I have 47 seconds left. I used to be on the road consortium. Mr. Tucker is now our road consortium rep. There's a document called the Road Consortium Planning Committee Report. This is very important. Y'all need to know what's going on. There's talks to move the location of the outer loop. That is going to affect every citizen in McLendon Chisholm, because the county, some people in the county don't like that it busts up against their neighborhood. Well, we need to make sure our citizens know about this and rally so that is not going to happen, because I know the folks in Sonoma Verde are not going to want the outer loop right in their backyard. Councilmember Tucker has been that representative since, I want to say, 2022. The last thing, and this is also very important, we spent a lot of money for a developer, or excuse me, a consultant to help us with the 205-550 interchange. There is development going on there, and we need to make sure that it falls in line with the plan that we came up with to make that the cornerstone of our community. Again, a roads issue that has not been addressed since I know at least 2023. There is legitimate work to be done around here, and we've got to stop this action of, I don't even know the word, I'm glad I got beat, thanks.
Thank you, Lorna. Real quick, Bev, can you make a note that we look into the, get that roads stuff update for me? I don't have the report, but I want to make sure that I'm getting on top of that now. Cindy Zeeman?
Good evening, Mayor McNeil, members of the council, and fellow community members. My name is Cindy Zeeman, and I'm a resident of McLendon Chisholm, and I live in Sonoma Verde with my husband. I'm here this evening to state my concern with the city council's legal battle with RCH, risking the swiftest option to access more water for our community and city, and my support of Mayor McNeil. My husband and I moved back to Rockwall almost three years ago. We're happy we found Sonoma Verde, but we quickly learned of the water issues and the mess around it. I want to respectfully express my dissatisfaction with the lack of transparency surrounding certain council members' ongoing meetings with outside council regarding a legal matter that I do not- not support. Councilmembers Day, Easter, McLendon, and Tucker, I urge you to stop pursuing this course of action, which is increasing the financial responsibilities of the citizens for actions you are pursuing. Specifically, I strongly oppose the city's efforts to become a water utility. Now is not the right time for such an endeavor, and it may never be the right time. I ask the council to reconsider and prioritize the needs and concerns of the community rather than prioritizing the needs, excuse me, the community making this a power. I ask the council to reconsider and prioritize the needs, the concerns of the community rather than making this a power play where citizens are treated like pawns in your game. I strongly urge the city to take the swiftest and most efficient route to secure water for our community, which is through the RCH CCN. This approach will ensure that we address this critical need in a timely and effective manner, and I have full confidence that RCH is moving in the right direction with David Naylor as its leader. Lastly, I want to take a moment to express my full confidence in Mayor McNeil and in the stewardship of our city. Under his leadership, I believe we are moving in the right direction, and I trust his vision and commitment to addressing the needs of our community for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Brett Zeeman?
Good evening. Brett Zeeman, 1527 Repasso Way. And I have to follow that. That's my wife. That's not an easy thing to do. I actually just, I'll address 9.1. I think everything else has been covered. As a retired military guy, and as Brian has served, and I'm not too else to serve, but Jerry, they may be the only two that, in the Air Force world, integrity, service before self, excellence in all we do for the community. And it kind of hurts as a military guy to look at another one getting trounced for nothing. Wake up. Smell the coffee because you're on the wrong side of the cup. That's it.
Thank you, Brett. John Powers?
John Powers, 1847 Baraway. I'm nursing a cough here, so I apologize for my voice. I'm here to talk about 9.1, the no confidence vote. There's already been several people that pointed out that there's no real mechanism to do this vote that anybody seems to be aware of, and no real standing and no real result, even if it went through. Now, in fairness, I don't know the specifics of what will be discussed in that back room, if it will be discussed in the background, back room. I don't know the specifics of that. But I do imagine that if the mayor had broken some law that prevented him from being the mayor, we wouldn't be talking about this. We'd be talking to law enforcement. If the mayor had done something of an ethical nature that prevented him from being the mayor, we would not be talking about this. We'd be talking to the Attorney General about it. So this comes down to, since we're not doing those things, it comes down to what everybody's kind of been pointing to here, is that it seems like a personal attack on the mayor, trying to damage the mayor on the way out. And you guys are going to have to decide what you do with all this. But I just have to ask, what benefit is that to the city? How does that help the city? How does that help people? How does that move us forward? All it does is leave a bad taste in everybody's mouth and create more animosity and more difficulty on the way out. So again, I hope when you guys go back there, you do whatever is the right thing. That's what I want you to do. The right thing. The right thing for the city, the right thing for yourselves, the right thing for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mark Hatley?
Hi, I'm Mark Hatley. I live at 267 Callahan Drive in Fayette, Texas. I'm your neighbor. I'm here to talk about 9.1. And as a citizen and as a neighbor from Fayette, I'm also a member of Fayette City Council. I think it's an abuse and at best likely an infringement of the Texas Open Meetings Act 551 to hide this agenda item in executive session. Full transparency. That's what the Open Meetings Act's for. Full transparency. Hiding this is appearing to make this look like a Star Chamber. Now, I do, on the record, fully support the hard work Mayor McNeil has done for McLendon-Chisholm and Rockwall County, and I, as a resident of Rockwall County, am eternally grateful to him. But even that's not the issue. I support anything being discussed as an agenda item on here. Win the argument. If you've got something to say, say it out in front of your citizens. This is what they're here for. You guys didn't elect each other. They elected you. Citizens of Fayette elected me. I'm accountable to them, no matter what I do. But it's an absolute abuse of executive session and the Texas Open Meetings Act to do this in quiet, behind closed doors. Now, it is an absolute honor to be here for the first time to speak in this chamber, in front of you all. I'm just very nauseated at the reason that I did. But if it comes up again, I'm more than happy to come and support these people. They care about their city, and I'm grateful as a fellow Rockwall County resident that they're supporting their mayor and doing the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up is going to be Bev Stevens on behalf of Julie Mazalek.
Thank you, Mayor. Julie Mazalek of 1919 Cecilia Lane. Hello. Mayor McNeil has gone above and beyond. He is available and responsive in a very timely manner. He offers assistance to citizens and follows up accordingly. He has strong relationships with community stakeholders, and he uses these relationships for citizens' benefits. He's contemplative to many opinions and weaves citizen input into his own. I could go on, but ultimately, the message is this. More than 80% of the voters had confidence in him then, and we still have confidence in him now. Keep up the good work because we appreciate it.
Thank you, Bev Stevens, again on behalf of Rosanna Taylor.
Rosanna Taylor, in Sonoma Verde. I wanted to take a moment to express my sincere appreciation for the way you have led our city with transparency and open communication. Your commitment to keeping residents informed and engaged is truly valued, and it's refreshing to have a leader who prioritizes the well-being of McLendon-Chisholm citizens. On the other hand, I strongly disagree with the actions of certain council members who have brought unnecessary chaos into our city. Their decisions, particularly the costly and unreasonable fight against RCH, have resulted in significant expenses that do not serve the best interests of our community. It is deeply frustrating to see individuals who seem more focused on personal agendas rather than on the needs of the residents they were elected to represent. I appreciate your continued dedication to responsible governance and transparency, and I stand in full support of your leadership. Thank you for all you do for our city.
Again, Bev Stevens on behalf of Jerry Netherland?
Jerry Netherland, 1216 Laverneau Drive. Unfortunately, I will not be able to participate in today's McLendon-Chisholm City Council meeting and to be able to speak on the agenda's topics. I would like to ask you to read my comments aloud into the minutes of the meeting. I have known Brian for over six years, ever since his home was being built and finally moved to Sonoma Verde. I will have to say that after getting to know Brian, it is obvious that he is one of the most passionate servant leaders I have met. I have never witnessed and or heard Brian ever pat himself on the back for the many awesome contributions City of McLendon-Chisholm Council and Mayor terms, toys for tots, and honoring fallen police officers and service members that he has made and is making to make things better for the people and kids. With the positive efforts and differences Brian is trying to make for this community, it is regrettable that he has to tolerate the impediments of certain city council members, Dan Tucker, Paul Day, Michael Easter, and Floyd McLendon. Since becoming mayor, Brian has been nothing but transparent to the city, not biased or doing what benefits himself, like the last mayor, Mayor Protam, and current previously mentioned city council members. Wow. When it comes to Brian communicating and being transparent, there's a double standard. It's okay for the past Mayor Protam to publish her opinion and thoughts, but not for Brian. Definitely never seen or heard the same issue brought up before. Guests since four city council member are working in vacuum, they don't like the truth. When it comes to no confidence, this is exactly what the people of McLendon-Chisholm have for the current four incompetent city council members, Dan Tucker, Paul Day, Michael Easter, and Floyd McLendon. These four are the root cause for the additional expense the people of the city are having to bear. What a shame and disappointment. They would cut off their nose to spite their face. It's apparent that when it comes to the will of the people for these four city council members, it only applies during election. Afterwards, it is what best benefits them. Good luck ever being elected again. May 2025 can't come soon enough. Brian, do not allow these four incompetent city council members to influence you away from continuing to do the right thing. Keep charging hard for the city of McLendon-Chisholm.
Bev Stevens again on behalf of Diane Lambert?
Diane Lambert, 1918 Cecilia Court. Dear esteemed members of McLendon-Chisholm City Council, I write to you today as a proud and engaged citizen who cares deeply about our community. I also write as someone who believes that city council members should not double as reality TV auditions. First and foremost, I want to extend my unwavering support for Mayor McNeil. I cast my vote for him, and I have not once regretted it. His leadership, patience, and dedication to transparency are exactly what this city needs. Likewise, my sincere gratitude goes to Councilmember Brewer, whose professionalism and willingness to communicate with residents are greatly appreciated. Their commitment to serving the people with integrity does not go unnoticed. However, it appears that some of our other council members, three in particular, have mistaken public service for a contact sport. From the outside looking in, it often seems that their primary goal is not betterment of our city, but rather to stir the pot, poke the bear, and generally make local government as inefficient and as frustrating as possible. While democracy thrives on debate, it wilts under unnecessary theatrics. Frankly, I expect more from elected officials than the kind of behavior I wouldn't tolerate at a family Thanksgiving dinner, and that's saying something. The citizens of McLendon-Chisholm deserve leadership that works towards solution, not discord, not discord. Disagreements are inevitable, but childish antics should not be. I urge these individuals to set aside whatever personal grievances they may have and focus on the real work of governing. Speaking of real work, our city needs water. It's a basic necessity, not a political pawn. Stop trying to block the efforts of RCH to address this critical issue. Infrastructure and responsible growth should be priorities, not obstacles. Please stay in your lane. Let progress happen for the good of our community. In closing, I want to again thank Mayor McNeil and Councilmember Brewer for their professionalism. Gives me hope for our city's future. To the rest of the council, I hope we can all move forward in a way that serves the best interests of our community, perhaps with a little less drama and a little more decorum.
Bev Stevens again on behalf of John Tumayo?
Hi, my name is John Tumayo, and I'm a resident of Sonoma Verde. I am very happy with Mayor McNeil's transparency and the way he keeps us updated of everything going on in our beautiful town. I moved in February of 2022, and I feel like he is heading us in the right direction from the circus that I have lived here. He has my full support. Thank you.
Bev Stevens again on behalf of Alfred Alvarado?
Alfred Alvarado, 1223 Laverneau Drive. My name is Alfred Alvarado, and I am a McLendon-Chisholm resident. I am writing today in support of Mayor Brian McNeil, a leader whose dedication, transparency, and honor have brought meaningful and lasting change to McLendon-Chisholm. Mayor McNeil has consistently prioritized the needs of our community, demonstrating selflessness and a commitment to public service that is rare in politics today. He has worked to build a brighter future for our city, often at great personal sacrifice, leading with courage, integrity, and honor. Mayor McNeil has brought transparency to our local government as he works toward ensuring that the people of our city are informed and empowered. His willingness to share the full truth about our city's challenges and opportunities rather than hiding behind bureaucracy and closed doors has equipped citizens with the knowledge they need to participate in local decisions. This level of openness has been a welcome change from the secrecy and misuse of power and public funds that have too often plagued our city's leadership in the past. While not everyone may agree with this new era of transparency, true leadership is not about pleasing everyone. It's about doing what is right. Mayor McNeil's approach has brought trust, accountability, and genuine engagement, reminding us of what ethical governance should look like. We need more leaders like Mayor McNeil, leaders who put people over politics, who stand firm in the face of opposition, and who are not afraid to challenge the status quo for the good of their community. I wholeheartedly support him and the vision he has for the city of McLendon-Chisholm.
Bev Stevens again on behalf of Jordan Connolly?
Jordan Connolly, 11880 Laverneau Drive. It is understood that a certain member members of the city council of McLendon-Chisholm have placed on tonight's meeting agenda the subject of a no confidence in the mayor of McLendon-Chisholm. As a McLendon-Chisholm resident who leads and represents multiple households by means of family, you are 100% believed in and supported. Even if there was disagreement with your decisions, to be clear, there are none to date. You would still be supported by these multiple homes and residents. There is sadly no longer any confidence in the council members who bring this subject to tonight's agenda. Mayor McNeil, you were voted for and won overwhelmingly by McLendon-Chisholm residents and would certainly win in even more overwhelming fashion should an election occur again today. Some of the council members never received the same level of support. Unfortunately for them, and even more so for the community, said council members through their actions, social media posts, profanities, attitudes, words, and evident contempt for constituents have fully eroded any level of trust, support, confidence, and even a common regard they were once privileged to hold. Please, Mayor McNeil, hold your head up high and proud of the job you have done thus far, but even more so of the job you will do with the major majority support of McLendon-Chisholm.
Bev Stevens again on behalf of Amanda Shipman?
Amanda Shipman, 1407 Barillo Drive. Dear members of the council, I am writing to express my concerns and appreciation for the governance of our city, particularly under the leadership of Mayor McNeil. Although I was unable to attend tonight's meeting, I wanted to take a moment to acknowledge the exceptional work Mayor McNeil has been doing. His commitment to transparency and full-time governance has not gone unnoticed, and I am consistently impressed by his dedication to our community. I would also like to recognize Councilman Brewer as being a wonderful asset to our mayor and city. To address the ongoing topic of RCH, our local water company, in my opinion, RCH has been making significant strides in providing our community with essential water service. I firmly believe that they should be allowed to continue their work without undue interference. The council's Water Committee, in my view, has become an unnecessary obstacle, and I strongly advocate for its immediate dismantling. Thank you for taking the time to consider my concerns.
Bev Stevens, one more time on behalf of the Fletcher family.
This is the last one. The Fletcher family, 1783 Baterno Way. The ongoing disputes surrounding our water situation over the past two years have been both exhausting and unnecessary. Even more concerning is the misuse of taxpayer dollars to fund litigation that the majority of citizens have repeatedly urged the council to stop. Time and again, our community has voted and voiced its composition in public meetings, making it clear the legation against RCH water is not in our best interest. It has become evident that Councilmembers Day, Tucker, McLendon, and Easter have their own agendas, prioritizing division over progress. Their latest attempt to question confidence in Mayor McNeil speaks volumes, not about McNeil's leadership, but about their own lack of professionalism and emotional maturity. The facts remain. The facts remain. McNeil was elected with an overwhelming 80-plus percent majority, and the community continues to stand behind him. Throughout his tenure, he has led with transparency, integrity, and a commitment to serving our residents. The personal opinions of these council members should not dictate the direction of our city, nor should they distract from the real work that needs to be done. We are fortunate to have Mayor McNeil as a dedicated leader and advocate, and we also appreciate the contributions of Councilmember Brewer. As we welcome new council members in May, we look forward to focusing on what truly matters, moving McLendon-Chisholm forward, and ensuring it remains a great place to live.
Thank you. So normally I would ask if anyone does have something to say, but since that has gone, we'll not do that. However, I'm actually going to make a citizen's comment tonight from the podium. So if you'll set the timer for me when I get... Brian McNeil, 1217 La Vorno. This morning I woke oddly most of the time. I rarely sleep through the night. Typically, my nights are disturbed for the issues that impact the city and the citizens. This usually has me awake, taking mental notes and trying to figure out ways to work through things. Sometimes it's an email I was sent or just something that was said, but I go back and I try to figure out a solution. When I first saw the items, I was just like, why? How's this good for the city? I then contemplated, do I say something? Do I remain silent? Here's the thing, when I was elected to be the mayor, I recall saying this from the dais very clearly, I'm not here to serve the men on the dais. I'm here to serve you. I don't look for the approval of the dais. I seek yours. I seek to talk to you. I seek to hear from you. I seek to find answers for you. So no matter what is presented, I am good. As stated, when I am asked on this, my answer is simply God has this. I can say beyond doubt that I have worked hard for this city. I've worked to make sure the citizens of the city know they have someone that cares for them and has truly wanted to leave this place better than I found it. Am I beyond a stake? No. Am I beyond flaw? No. Will I mess up? I will. I'll admit my errors, though. I will seek self-improvement and I will say how I plan to work better on that error, and then I'll course correct it. As making the same mistake over and over again is now not a mistake, it's a choice. Therefore, please know I am always going to course correct for you. This morning I spoke at the commissioner's court to continue my fight against D.R. Horton and the massive development that they want to bring to our county that would directly impact this city. Five-oh was the vote, sending D.R. Horton packing yet again, which blows me away. If you come to want to work with us, come and work with the community. Seems it would be much easier if they did that. The other side to this is, it was mentioned over and over in the commissioner's court this morning, is the teamwork from the mayors in Rockwall County and the commissioners and the county judge, those that go to Austin to speak out, like Dennis London, who has testified on behalf of this county and this city. Mark Hippet, who is very much embedded in making sure our county and city that he loves is built in the right way with the right ones at the right time. This, folks, is how it should be, how it should work, come together to find common ground, even in the disagreements we have. So back when I spoke about this morning, I remember feeling, when I got ready, each article of clothing I put on, I felt I was putting on the armor of God, the sword of the Spirit, which is the sword of God. Psalms 35:1-5. Contend, O Lord, with those who contend with me; Fight against those who fight against me. Take hold of the buckler and shield and rise up for my help. Draw also the spirit and the battle axe to meet those who pursue me. Say to my soul, I am your salvation. Let those be ashamed and dishonored who seek my life; Let those be turned back and humiliated who devise evil against me. I will end with this, thank you to the numerous calls, texts, emails, and messages that spoke to me tonight. If God is for us, who can be against us? If y'all endorse me, it's been a long hour. If we could take about a five-minute recess, so those can use the restroom or if anyone wants to clear out. I apologize. I've been asked to make it 10 minutes, so it is 7:34. At 7:44, we will reconvene from recess. Thank you. It is 7:44. I'm going to go ahead and bring us out of recess. I know we're one council member short, but we have enough up here to get this going for consent agenda. Are there any items on consent agenda from 6-1 through 6-5 that anyone wants to pull from consent? Or I'll accept a motion to approve consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
With the second, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Show that approved with Easter being absent as of right now. Next up is item number seven, presentation from CWD Annual Report. Jason, welcome. We appreciate you coming.
All right. Do I need a clicker or anything, or go through the presentation? Yeah, it was about a month ago. That's, um, I could talk through it.
It was about a month ago. If you want to talk through it and then...
Yeah.
I mean, since it's just a report, if you don't mind, Jason, talk through it.
Absolutely.
And then if you can, send it to Angela.
Yep.
And Angela, after that, can you make sure all the council gets it?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Not a problem.
Is the council okay with that?
I'll talk through the numbers and I can get that report to you this evening, probably. But, good evening, Mayor Council. My name is Jason Raymer. I'm the president at Community Waste Disposal. I'm here this evening with Juana Smith, our municipal coordinator, to present to you all with words this time, the 2023 and 2024 Annual Review. Quick summary of the services that CWD provides. We've been partners with your community since January 2019, when we took over the trash and recycling services. We provide weekly trash collection of a CWD-provided 95-gallon cart and weekly one cubic yard of bulky waste and unlimited tied-and-bundled brush. All of the trucks that CWD uses in the city are compressed natural gas. They're equipped with additional tag axles, which reduce wear and tear on your streets. When the truck is full, they drop those axles and drive down, you know, Highway 205 to leave your city. That's a significant investment we make to not only improve the environment with air quality, but the trucks are significantly quieter than diesel, and they also have a lot of cost savings for the city in terms of those annual adjustments as well. We also provide weekly recycling service, again in a CWD-provided 95-gallon recycle cart. Our residential driver incidents, so there's obviously no chart to look at here. There's not too much method to the madness. It's more to let you know that we track these, what a residential driver incident is, is anything that hits our safety department. That could be a rut in the yard, a damaged fence, could be a worker's comp claim, an injury on the job. That just lets you know that we track that by city, by year, and report it to you all. Our residential recycle tonnage, so in 2023, we saw 385 tons of recyclables collected in your community. In 2024, that increased to 464 tons. Both years are about 42 pounds per home per month of recycling, so you're staying consistent with your prior years. There was obviously growth in the number of homes in the city, but that 42 pounds per home puts you in the kind of upper 25% of cities with similar services. There we are. Oh, that's the monthly report. That's okay. But there's your recycle tonnage by month. That's provided to you monthly. So those are all great numbers. We'd like to see it grow with your community, and keeping that pounds per home consistent means that folks are moving here and they're catching on quickly. So they're, they are recycling. They're not holding on to old habits where maybe they didn't have a recycling program. The best number that I'm not able to show you tonight is your customer service inquiries. So a grievance, we track these religiously at CWD. There's a report that goes out 6:56 every single morning and about six times throughout the day. It's on the live screen in our dispatch office, but we track grievances by city, all the way down to the route, in a live fashion. What a grievance is, is any dispute that a resident has. What a grievance is, is any dispute that a resident has, what they feel wronged. We track that as a grievance. If the driver honked at him and made a bad face at him, that will go down as grievance, you know, it'd be a driver issue. And it would also fall in the case if we missed your trash or recycling. And we track those things across the number of service opportunities. That's simply just to normalize a ratio for you all. Otherwise, I can stand up here and say, in every city, we have ninety-nine point nine-nine percent service excellence. Well, that point zero one percent is what we really like to focus on. So what we saw in twenty-twenty-three is the per one-thousand service opportunities, we had one-point-zero-six grievances. So that means we, for every thousand homes we drove, we got a call about a missed pickup or an issue. In twenty-twenty-four, we saw that number drop to point-six-five below the industry average of one-point-zero. So that's a thirty-nine percent reduction. Few things attributed to that. We did replace a couple of the drivers that were just kind of having continual issues. Some were mixing trash and recycle occasionally and others just not fulfilling what we expected of them. So we put higher, you know, visibility on that and we're seeing a great change. So that's great progress year over year. A little bit of the company update, so you can't see it on the map here, but we were undergoing a lot of change at CWD. You know, the first and most awkward thing to talk about is myself. Title of President was recently passed on to me by my father last October, when CWD celebrated our forty-year anniversary. So my father, Greg Raymer, who started CWD in nineteen-eighty-four, took the title of CEO. We swapped offices. He's still very much involved in the company, but he's starting to get to go take those abroad vacations more frequently now, so that's more of a structure update. In terms of our site, so we have twenty-three acres over on California Crossing, kind of near the old Cowboys stadium or the new casino, whatever's going to go there now. There we park two-hundred trucks, five-hundred employees, our recycling facilities located there, and we're doing a lot to invest in the infrastructure. Part of that is adding one-hundred-and-fifty compressed natural gas truck parking spots. That was completed in January of last year. Prior to that, we had about one-hundred-and-ninety trucks and a hundred parking spots, so it was Tetris every single day at CWD. So now we've got a great big parking lot. We're in the process of doubling our transfer station. It's going to be a fifteen-thousand-square-foot facility where we can bring trash, load it up in a big trailer and drive it down to Ferris, Texas, where it's cheaper to dump. That may not impact McClendon so much, but it does give us flexibility as a company and our investment again in this market. Lastly, but not least, we're in the process of designing and updating our maintenance facilities. We're about thirteen bays now. We're going to have about twenty-four hopefully by August of next year. Again, this is all investing in the infrastructure of our company, which serves your community and our commitment to only this market. We have no other locations in other cities. Couple of technology updates. So we're in the process of updating our back office solution. We currently use a software we started in two thousand and four. We're going to a company called Softpack. It's going to be a great update to our software. That's our billing, our customer notes, kind of the CRM system behind the scenes. It's got paperless routing, so we can put tablets in the commercial driver trucks and some of the residential trucks and route optimization and things like that. We are also in the process of receiving our equipment orders, so through the end of this year, we have roughly fifty-seven trucks on order. The majority of those are replacement vehicles. We replace a truck every ten years. We paint them completely brand-new every five. But we stay on top of that. As your community grows, we are projecting out what equipment we need this time next year, because it takes a long time to get a truck and that's no small investment. Cost of a truck now, especially compressed natural gas, is about five-hundred-and-fifty to six-hundred-thousand dollars. So you can quickly do the math and see it's quite an investment in our fleet, making sure it is, you know, staying young and staying intact to serve your, your community. With that, I will pass it on to Wanda Smith now to finish the last few slides.
Good evening and thank you for having us. We really appreciate your attention to what Jason just said. And where I come in is as a municipal coordinator, I've had the privilege of being that for just about a year now with CWD. And I come in where the events are happening and one of the ones I have the pleasure of being at was your Extreme Green Event, your trash off that you had. And I believe it was the third quarter of last year, so it was a great program and I love supporting that and I love the fact that the city really came through. We had a lot of people come through with their HHW as well as some of their trash items. And we were able to support that and fulfill a need for your recycling. And as Jason said, your numbers are off the charts. You're, you're growing and you're recycling a lot more. And that diverting a lot from the landfill really is very important to our overall well-being, so we really appreciate it. And with that, we do have a couple of plaques that are from twenty-twenty-three and from twenty-twenty-four, so I'll just hand those over to you and you can decide where to, to display them properly. But I appreciate your, your support for the community and I'm happy to be a part of it. Thanks.
Any questions?
I don't have any questions. Does staff or council have any questions?
Just make a quick comment that I, I've, being on city council for the past four years, we've worked together. We've, you know, talked on a couple of different issues. I remember being in the back office there and going through a discussion about the rise in the number of grievances and you guys tackled that on the immediate and came up with a very good resolution for all of that very quickly and expeditiously. So I just want to applaud you guys. You guys have been very good partners working with the city. I think with this level of grievances being down to six-point-six-five, I think it was, that's tremendous. And so again, just a round of applause for you on that. Thank you.
Sorry, Jason. Wanda got the applause and you didn't. You spoke the longest, but, uh, no, we, we appreciate you. I can say every time I email Jason or call Jason or even text Jason, he's on it. I remember even one on a Saturday, he helped me get a customer taken care of that. By them having an emergency, they weren't able to get their trash out and he went over there and they, they got it done, so I commend you. I appreciate you and thanks for coming out and giving us that presentation. All right, next up. Angela, next up is going to be eight-point-one.
Discuss and consider approval of Sonoma Verde North Resolution for PID creation petition and calling for public hearing.
Entertain, oh, yeah, I'll entertain a motion on this one, so we can open it up for discussion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we discuss and consider approval of Sonoma Verde North Resolution for a PID creation petition, calling for public hearing.
Second? Okay, and city administrator, it's up to you, Beth. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor. This request was submitted by Taylor Duncan to act on a PID creation by resolution. You have the resolution in your packets. And they have a call for, it also calls for a public hearing to be held on four-twenty-two, and they are represented tonight by their legal counsel, Roxanne Sheehan, and she is here to answer any of your questions.
Roxanne, you'll be at the podium and then I usually go down the line.
Okay, good evening. Do you need my address or we're good with all that? No?
No.
Okay, all right.
Totally different. Mr. Easter, do you have anything?
I do not.
Mr. McClendon? Mr. Brewer?
No, I don't.
Mr. Day? And Mr. Tucker?
No, we had a conversation with you last week.
We're set that time. Thank you.
Okay, well, hold on. Stay there for eight-point-two and then, uh, will, all those in favor on considering that motion we had, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, Angela, show that one unanimous and after you get that one, if you can read eight-point-two.
Discuss and consider approval of Sonoma Verde East Resolution for PID creation petition and calling for public hearing.
I'll entertain a motion on item eight-point-two.
I'll make a motion to discuss and consider approval of Sonoma Verde East Resolution for the PID creation petition and calling for public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, back to you, Beth.
I have nothing else to add on this one. Roxanne is your lady.
Any questions?
All right, we'll go down the list and is there any questions, Mr. Easter?
No, sir.
Mr. McClendon, Mr. Brewer, Mr. Day, Mr. Tucker. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Show that one unanimous.
All right, well, thank you all. We'll see you for the hearing.
That was easy. All righty, eight-point-three. Angela, whenever you're ready on that one.
Discuss and consider amending the travel policy to require all reimbursements as set forth in current policy that may exceed three-hundred dollars first to be approved by council following, following petition by staff, staff representative, city official or other. Council may consider approval by, by applying limits for such reimbursements.
I'll entertain a motion on item eight-point-three.
Well, I'll make a motion that we discuss and consider amending the travel policy to require all reimbursements as set forth, et cetera. Council may consider approval by applying limits for such reimbursements.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, it's on the floor.
Thank you. Several weeks ago, our financial officer made some comments about the travel policy and where we were with that in terms of expenditures on it. And so I was, I was a little bit taken back. I didn't quite understand or had really noticed that in the budget, but I had some questions about it because I think it was starting to get peaked out. Let me work a little harder at this then, sorry. So I, I just wanted to talk a little bit about the, the policy in general. I have a copy of it. And in, in reading that copy, it seemed to be a little, a little porous in terms of accountability. And so I wanted to see if we could maybe amend it in some fashion so that the council would have a little bit more control over this policy in general. And so I, I think I'm going to ask a couple of questions here of the city administrator and of the financial officer to kind of guide us through what the policy is and how important I think it is to have a little bit more control over by council specific. And so who, who is in control of the travel policy generally speaking?
Typically, if someone wants to take a trip, it has to be approved by the city administrator.
Okay.
And everything that was, has been done so far this year was approved by my predecessor. It was all planned when I got here. So, but it does, it does go through my office for approval.
And that's, after reading it, I understood that, but for the sake of discussion, are there any criteria for approval? Is there any, what's the, is there any foundation for, yes, I can approve this one versus maybe not this one? Is there any?
Not to my knowledge in the policy, there isn't anything like that. Now, anybody that knows me knows I'm going to ask a lot of questions when it comes to me, you know. If it's training, what are you going to learn? Is it necessary? And then when you come back, you better tell me you learned something.
Well, I'm hoping at the end of this that we'll take, we'll take the onus off of you and actually put it on council to make some of those decisions.
It's policy, not legislative, so it really needs to stay with my office.
Okay, that being said, there, there are certain amounts of money that are, monies are being spent and so ultimately that goes back to budget. Am I correct? And so there's some restraints on the amount of monies that are being dedicated, at least in this, this budget item, and I think it was ten-thousand dollars. Am I correct on that?
Jeff, was it ten?
Pretty sure it was ten-thousand dollars that's been dedicated?
Yes, for council training. That's correct.
Okay, and so have we not gone over that at this point in time?
We are slightly over that, yes, sir.
So if it's, if it's limited to ten-thousand dollars and we're over that and we've paid out on expenses, where's the other money coming from? So if it, if it's up to twelve-thousand dollars in terms of expenses, do we just tap into general funds? Is that how that works?
So we do budget amendments every year, because there's always things that we go over and that things that we're under. So at the end of the year, we try to basically level that out. If as a, for the year we overspend, then that comes out of the general fund reserves. But there is a legal process in government code for amending the budget for anything that, that we deem necessary.
Okay, so on the immediate, this, this line item could go to fifteen, twenty-thousand dollars at some point and that wouldn't pass through city council. It would just be legisla, or this would be adjusted somehow at the end of budget?
Well, we would do, we would do a budget amendment at some point during the year, which would come to city council.
So would come back to city council?
Yes, the amendments have to be approved just like the budget does in the first place to start the year.
So, so it, it doesn't occur at the ten-thousand mark. Where, where, what point would it be coming back to council for consideration?
If we did a budget amendment every time we spent something that we hadn't planned for at the beginning of the year, we would, we would be amending every, every meeting, pretty much.
Is there some defined amount where you would come back to city council on that?
To my knowledge, and Mr. Hall, you may be able to speak more direct to this, but I don't think that the legal code has a specific dollar amount or anything of that nature.
And the question is, can we, can we assign a, assign a, a value?
Yes, actually, under one-two-point-oh-one-oh, it actually says you can amend the budget for any good municipal purpose. So, and that's as, as Mr. White said, pretty much you, you'd spend all day, every meeting in an order, have an order to submit the budget if you want to do that. That's why most time cities do it maybe two or three times a year, usually right before they're going to pass the budget in September. So as far as travel policy goes, the way that a lot of cities do it is they will have criteria and say, these things are reimbursable under the travel policy. What they do also is they have two-thousand, three-thousand dollars or whatever per council member and the list of things you can get reimbursed, like hotel, gas, food, not alcohol, you know, things like, no matter how much you may need it. So stuff like that, okay, gets, is reimbursable. And then it's simply turning in the receipts or whatever and it's whatever, and that's what's budgeted in. So if it's three-thousand dollars, it's three-thousand dollars times six. And you get yours, you get yours, you get yours, you get yours, and all down the line. And once that's used up, it's used up, nothing more, and that's just the way it is. That, that is, that saves a lot of time and hassle because it leaves it, each council member then knows, hey, I got a three-thousand-dollar maximum. I know it could use it for, they go through, they have the city secretary usually, also indoor, the city administrator. They usually go through and have them make the arrangements for hotels and things like that. And then they always turn in the receipts and the city administrator signs off on them, so boom, you know, it's three-thousand minus, whatever it is. And so you always know, if you go to a conference, you always know you got what's left. You then get to choose, do I want to use it on TML? Well, instead of using it on TMLs, I want to use it on something that's a little bit closer, because I want to go to two conferences this year, so that means I won't have enough money to stay at hotels for both of those. So I want to go to two conferences, but I'm going to pick something closer, those types of things. There's a lot more, so there's a lot less of bureaucratic red tape, I guess you could say, involved. It kind of treats people like adults, but it also goes through city administrator and the city secretary's office to get it all, all done.
Okay, on that note, certainly, I, I'm looking at my own addenda item and I think I'm probably going to come back on this and tease this out a little bit more. I've had some conversations with some of their folks and, and I think there'll be other amendments that want, want to be introduced. And within the framework of how this really works, I like it to be efficient and not have a debate every time this goes over to three-hundred dollars. Might be too limiting to some degree. Yeah, yeah. Well, you know, I was looking for.
You know, cover you for gas or here in San Antonio, I'm back if you want to do that.
Maybe I can get you back, but, uh, and so I, I think I'll have another conversation on this, bring it back and maybe fine-tune it and certainly with some of your guidance on this thing. So that we can work out a policy that is, that, that there's accountability. That's really what I'm looking at, so.
Well, and that would be, and what I just said, the example I gave is there's your accountability. It's three-thousand dollars. You get to choose what you want, but you still have to turn it in to the secretary, city administrator, and they have to say, they document everything. So they're going to tell you, hey, you're at two-thousand-nine-hundred-ninety-eight dollars and ninety-eight cents. So, you know, you pretty much know that you're done. So there's your accountability.
Right. We don't have to reinvent the wheel on this. I'm, I'm sure that you'll have enough suggestions for us to manufacture something and put it together.
Yeah, Mayor Proton Tucker, we just, we discovered on this year's budget that council and staff, training and travel was lumped into one item. And in speaking with Jeff, we realized that wasn't a smart thing to do because the staff still has to do a lot of training. So for next year's budget, we are going to propose that travel and training be split into two budget lines.
Great. I, I know we're short in terms of before we leave this council, but I certainly, certainly would like to work with you guys on this and, and maybe press something out, something that's acceptable and maybe even leave it to the next council to either accept or reject.
I'm assuming you don't want to take any action? Okay, so no action. We'll go through item eight-point-four. Angela.
Discuss and consider action to direct city staff to produce regular unbiased videos that summarize or announce meetings. that summarize or announce meetings, events, and other businesses related to the city for placement of the city's social media sites, especially for use on Facebook.
I'll entertain a motion on eight point four.
I'll make a motion to discuss and consider action on to direct the city's staff to produce regular unbiased videos that summarize or announce meetings, events, and other businesses related, or business related to the city for placement on the city's social media sites, especially for use on Facebook.
Sir, second?
Second.
Mr. Day.
Thank you, council, for allowing me to bring this up and to talk about it. What inspired this was actually me just scrolling on Facebook, and there was a, two very interesting videos that came up. One from our sister city Heath. Their, their interim city manager had done a five-minute sum-up video of the events of what was happening in the city. And it was very clear and concise, and you could get right down to the nitty-gritty. And I knew what was happening in Heath in five minutes. There wasn't a lot of commentary. She just delivered it. It was actually professional. I, I enjoyed it. And I felt like that was something that I had some interest in seeing if the city, I, I took it right over to Bev, and I said, Bev, have you seen what they're doing over there? And she, you know, I don't know if you ever took the time to look, but you know what I'm talking about here. And I'm not talking about something extensive where you get, you know, a choreograph it or whatever. This is, you know, she sits down, she says, we had a meeting last night, and this is what's going on. And then, the P and Z, they're doing this, and these are events that are happening that are going, you know, kind of this type of communication. And then, I, I kind of fell in love with that, and I don't know if my phone was listening to me because I was scrolling again later on the next day. And the city of Rockwall had theirs, and instead of, they had a full, it might have been City of Rockwall, but they had a whole bunch of people from the city all participating with little 45-second vignettes, and they patched it all together, and they were talking about what was happening with the Parks Department, whatever it was. And it, it was actually very interesting, and I said that, you know, that, that's really a great way to communicate. And I, I wanted to put it before the council to see if this would be something that they would be interested in doing. I thought it was pretty cool. It, it didn't seem controversial to me. It just was like, hey, this is what we're doing, this is what we're about, hey, and there's events. Do you want to participate? You want volunteer opportunities, those were all being announced, and I, I just thought it was really cool. And that's what inspired this.
Bev, I'm going to send this over to you because I think you've done some research.
Thank you, mayor, I have. I actually had the opportunity to meet with Erin Adele, the Heath interim city manager, and she shared with me how they do this. Their PR firm takes the agenda and writes a script, watches the city council meeting that night, edits the script, comes to her office the next morning, videos her reading the script, and then goes back and puts in the fly-in videos, page slides, whatever else might need to be in it. And then, they post it on the social media appropriate sites. So, I asked who their PR firm was, and it turns out that it is Bailey Brook who does our website. So, I spoke to them this week to get an estimate to do this. They would do two meetings a month for us, where they would write the script, take the agenda, write the script, listen to the, watch the meeting. They wouldn't come here. They would watch the meeting, come back in the next morning when I've had a chance to sleep, and actually record the video, and the cost would be $845 a month.
Thank you. Bev, you're, it, it sounds like you're pretty busy, as is. How much spare time do you, would you, might you have for something like this if you were interested in doing it?
If I had spare time, I would be happy to do it. But at this point in time, with everything that's going on, we no longer have a city planner, so I am wearing a little bit of that hat at this point, too, along with Mr. Coker. So, it's, it's, at this point, there's not a lot of spare time, but if council instructs me to do this, I work for the six of you.
Yeah, it, it, just trying to prioritize, I, I think the key activities you ought to be doing, I mean, it, it sounds like you're, you're, I guess bandwidth is pretty limited as is. Okay, that, that was my question, thank you.
Mr. McLennan. Mr. Drew.
Yeah, that was, one of my concerns was the costs, because nothing's for free. And I do think, given our resources, we do try to do a good job of putting things out on Facebook, putting it on our website. A lot of times, it's just getting the people to get, to go look it up. I think maybe down the line, this is something we look at in the budget session for the next fiscal year. But I think right now, given the fact that you're kind of wearing so many hats at the moment, I just don't think it's the appropriate time to do it.
Mr. Day.
Yeah, that's interesting. I did not have that input before we came into the meeting. I didn't know that that was being done through a PR firm or this other stuff. I did not know it was being done through a PR firm. So, this is, this is actually very interesting, and you're right, we don't have it budgeted. So, this was, I just thought it was kind of a cool idea that we put on there. I, I enjoy stuff like this. In fact, I still follow, I no longer live where I, where I was raised, of course, but I still watch their videos just to be up to date on what's going on in municipal events across the country and in places that matter to me. And we're going to have expats that are going to be interested in what happens in McLennan-Chism. And so, I just thought it would be kind of a cool thing. I mean, it's, we don't have to take action. In fact, you know, it, it doesn't sound like we have the ability to do so, or, or, or the finances to do so right now. But it's something that I, I would like for the staff to kind of put a seed in their, in their mind, and see if this is something that we could work towards. And maybe we have something we could even do in-house. I mean, that's, you know, and a lot of people immediately said, oh, 800 bucks, that's a lot of money. It's actually, for a lot of the stuff, it's not. But I'm not saying that I want to spend it, you know? Though, those are, those are different questions. So, yeah, I mean, it, I, I'm fine if people don't want to move forward on this, but it's just an interesting idea, and I enjoyed it. Like I said, I, I learned a lot about what's going on in Heath really quickly, and I thought that that would be a very good Cliff's Notes for people here to get information rather than it coming through Facebook, or whatever it is. Anyways, just, I thought it was, and several people actually had mentioned, you know, if, if, if you, if you wanted to speak, you know, in this way, you know, make your own videos. I, I raised five kids in the city, you know? I've been a full-time dad at work, you know? I do all this other stuff. These guys are dads, or they all full-time gigs and stuff, you know? It's hard for us to, to do this kind of stuff, you know? It's, it's a big carve-out, it's a big impact. And so, I just thought this would be a kind of a tool to help us reach out so that you guys would understand some of the issues a little bit, you know, a little better. Anyway, that's it.
Mr. Tucker.
Yeah, I, I think it's very attractive, weighted to disseminate information from the city's standpoint. I, I would support it, but I think it's, at this point in time, I'm, I'm not convinced that the money's there. And, and certainly, the time that would be dedicated to it, I'm not convinced that this is the moment.
Mayor, might just add from a personal note, any idea that gives the world more Bev? I think it's a pretty good idea. So, I want to make sure that I was on the record with that.
Yeah, I, I can say Mayor Trace Johannesen in Rockwall is one of the first who started doing videos, started doing them on YouTube and created, it was actually really awesome how he did it. He created a bunch of different Youtubes, created the links, and so anytime someone had a question, he just copied and pasted that video. I, too, do videos, so I will always give an update, again, my opinion only. Anyway, eight point four, I guess, are we going to take no action on that one as well?
Yeah, it, it seems like we should take no action. We don't have a budget for it. I did, I, I, if she was going to say, yeah, you know, I'll sit down for 15 minutes and, you know, I actually brought one of these things out here to show you, clip it on your, on your computer. This is my little prop for today's eight point four. I, I record videos for my students all the time, so I just sit down and I record and put it out there across the internet or whatever. But if it's something that you're more comfortable with a script and PR and all this other stuff, and, and you want a, a budget for that, then by all means, when the new budget season comes up, I, I would encourage you to consider doing something like that. But I understand not doing it now.
It's going to bring us to item nine. I, I have a question on this one real quick. Mr. Tucker, being that this is your item, do you need legal advice?
I'll defer to Mr. Hall on this. Do I need legal advice on, on going to executive session discussing this?
I mean, if you need legal advice about the topic, that's, we have a very good city secretary, and I believe that she put, yeah, 5510712, that is the exception to the Open Meetings Act for receiving legal advice. I mean, that's its purpose, that's why it exists. So, any topic on the agenda that the council wants legal advice on, they can get it. And the, the law looks and says, hey, look, we want to make sure that if you need to check with your attorney about something before you talk about something, take an action on something, or whatever, just like a regular, normal person would have, we want you to have that. But if you don't think you need legal advice on there, then, yeah, there's, would be no reason to go in the executive session.
I, I feel that at this point in time, we, we do need legal advice on this, that we want to make sure that we're doing this properly, and that if we continue, continue to pursue this, that it be done correctly according to the law. We need to satisfy some, some of that, and so, I'm liking to go into executive session at this point in time.
Okay, I'm going to add, before we do go into this executive session, I want it to be very clear, this is not a personnel matter, I am not personnel. This is not a land purchase. This is not litigation. I'm also the chair in executive session, is that correct, Mr. Hall? So, when we go into executive session, we are going to be very clear that we will discuss your legal questions, and that is all. There will be no more, there will be no talk of the item. The talk of the item will happen out here in front of them. But you will be able to ask your legal question back there. I just want to make sure we're very clear, there's not going to be a debate back there.
There's no intention of, of having any debate back there. I hadn't intended that, nor will I.
I just want to make sure that you are clear that this is their house.
I will follow the instructions of my, my legal counsel on this.
And I'm still the chair.
I appreciate it. I appreciate that.
I am still the chair. And you need to know that when we go back there.
I heard you the first time.
At this time, we, the city of council for the city of McLennan-Chism, Texas, reserves the right to convene into executive session at any time during the course of the meeting to discuss any of the matters listed as authorized by Texas Government Code, Chapter 551, including but not limited to 551071, consultation with attorney, 551072, real property, 551073, prospective gifts, 551074, personnel matters, 551076, security devices, 551086, utility competitive matters, and 551087, economic development negotiation. At this time, it is 8:21, we will be in executive session. Please hang tight. At this time, it is 8:21, we will be in executive session, please hang tight. It is 8:29, we are back from executive session. No action was taken. Mr. Hall, I'll turn this over to you to give us advice on how this goes from here.
I mean, there were questions, and without divulging anything, I mean, there were questions in executive session directed towards me. I believe that I answered those. It seemed like council was satisfied with the answers. At this point, the way the agenda item is posted, it's just like any other agenda item at this point. If council wants to discuss, you know, anything, they're welcome to discuss it, they don't have to discuss it, they don't have to take action. Anything, it's just like a regular agenda item at this point. So, whatever council's pleasure, council is free to do.
Mr. Easter?
I've got nothing.
Mr. McLendon.
Mayor Pro Tim, you handed this to us in executive session. It is three pages of reason for censure to the mayor. There are nine items on this. Item number one, in summer, fall 2024, on at least two occasions, McNeil was asked by council members if he had shared privileged and confidential information with any party outside the state, to include RCH, WSC. His response, he had not. Item number two, in fall 2024, McNeil was asked if he had disseminated privileged information to outside parties, to include RCH, WSC. This information included a verbatim written agenda item regarding a contract between the city and RCH. The agenda item was identical in written form, as it was issued in a letter by RCH and addressed to the city prior to official release of the agenda to the public. In the letter, RCH threatened to sue both the city and individual council members. Before multiple witnesses, McNeil denied providing this information to RCH. Item number three, on November 12th, 2024, McNeil asked specifically whether he had provided the above agenda item in its original form to RCH prior to public release of the council's agenda. On the council dais, he publicly admitted providing information which he had emphatically denied on at least two previous occasions. He also admitted to confering with the RCH legal counsel prior to issuance of their notice to the city, which again included threats to sue the city as well as individual city council members. Item number four, McNeil acted in an unprofessional manner when he allegedly provided directives against city administrator resulting in restraining the performance of his official duties. Item number five, in 2023, during an executive session of the city council, then city councilman McNeil acted in an unprofessional manner against a fellow city officer. In and about August 2024, McNeil acted in an unprofessional manner against two city councilmen while discussing city business at city hall. Item number seven, on 12 October 2024, McNeil acted in an unprofessional manner against a fellow councilman. This resulted in a physical encounter. The action culminated in an incident report being filed by the county sheriff's office. Currently, a grand jury review of this incident is pending. Item number eight, in October 2024, following the incident above, McNeil acted unprofessionally when he allegedly attempted to influence a public official to change, modify, and/or rescind his affidavit account regarding the 12 October 2024 incident. Item number nine, in October 2024, following the above incident, McNeil acted in an unprofessional manner against the sheriff investigating officer after disclosure of the officer's findings. So, these nine items, Mayor Pro Tim, exactly what are we discussing?
Currently, I, I would prefer that we don't go into a discussion. I mean, that's my own advocacy. And the reason being is that Mayor McNeil, just on the immediate receive these, he has no awareness of where we're, I think, where we're coming from on this. He has, he's, should have some kind of a reasonable defense at some point in time. I would like to give him the adequate amount of time to prepare, and concomitantly, those others compliment on this, on this dais, had just got hold of this, this listing as well. And so, they're not prepared to respond to this. So, I would suggest that in two weeks, that this become a, be placed on the agenda, and be discussed then, and have a resolution available for, for censure at that point in time.
So, you're stating that you want, this is considered a serving to the mayor of these nine accounts?
I do.
And to give him time in order for his defense?
Absolutely.
So, the next, the next meeting would also have to be a public hearing as well?
Oh, that's absolute. I mean, I never considered that this was going to be behind closed doors. I think, for some reason, the folks in the audience seemed that this is all going to transpire back here, and we're going to have a vote, but that was never going to be the case, and I don't know where the, the thought came of that. But it was always going to be open discussion.
That's all that I have.
Thank you, Mr. McLendon. Mr. Brewer. Mr. Day.
Well, this might be the most vague reading I think I've heard of anything. I, I have no defense. If you wanted to talk about it right now, I'd be happy to.
I don't see that as being really fair to you, Brian. I think you should go back and maybe, maybe you should go back and reflect on some of these items, and you will remember some of these episodes. And then beyond that, beyond that, I've got the floor, is that my own...
You are out of order. This is, this is my meeting, my meeting, Mr. Tucker. I apologize. You're out of order. You're out of order. The chair doesn't recognize you right now.
Okay, Brian.
See, the problem that has happened lately, and I apologize for that, is this council has decided that they're going to control these meetings, and that stops. And this absurd reason for censure, I'm willing to talk about it right now. I don't need time for defense. This isn't a trial. This is a city council that's supposed to be doing work for them, not play games. You're on your way out the door, and this is what you want to do, and this is how you want to be remembered? I'm willing to talk about it now, April 8th, April 22nd, whenever, because I have zero to hide.
Next city council, we will have the opportunity to discuss this, and again, I think my own city council members here need some time to look at this, review it, and, and understand what we're trying to do here. So, if, if you're willing to go through the process of, of discussing it now, that's, that's great. However, I would prefer, and Mr. Hall, I asked you earlier about due process, maybe you can explain that to these folks, so they have an understanding of what we're trying, of what we're really trying to do, and be fair to all these folks up on this dais.
Okay, so, you and I, over the last week and a half, have had lengthy, lengthy dialogues, long emails. I've sent them at 10:30 at night, 9 o'clock at night. We have vetted this. I understand you completely disagreed with me on this, and I understand that, and you have the right to do that. I've made my case, pointed out where, where we discussed.
But not on due process.
Right.
We had disagreements on some other issues.
Right. And I'm not a fan of, of censure without a policy, but we talked about that, and you did say in your email, I believe, you said you wanted to comply with the spirit of due process. Well, what is due process? Is the opportunity to be heard, the opportunity to prepare an adequate defense to charges or things or statements against you, in essence, is what due process was. So, we discussed it, and you asked, hey, look, can we do this with, with the mayor? And I said, I said, yes, that, that would at least comply with the spirit of, of due process, giving him the opportunity to, to say, hey, look, this is what you're leveling against me, Mayor Pro Tim. I have the opportunity to prepare a response or rebuttal, or whatever you call it, to that. Now, we also talked about, I said, if he wants to do that right here and now, and what I said, we can do that. I mean, that's what, that's what he wants to do, but that's in general what we discussed about the due process.
Absolutely, and I appreciate your, your comments on due process. And so, that being said, if you want to discuss it, so be it. However, I personally won't have any responses.
We'll do it like this. Hold on. Please, I want to keep decorum, okay? And I apologize for, it made my ears ring, so I apologize for slamming that hard. I can be better. So, without breaking decorum, and without applause, craziness, or anything like that, you've heard the nine items read out by Councilmember McLendon. So, this is, this is me, this is how I will do my trial right now, by a show of hands. If you still support me and have confidence in me as your mayor, please raise your hand. I'm good. We'll go on, thank you. We'll go on to the next item, which is council member reports and announcements. Mr. Easter?
I have nothing.
Mr. McLendon. Mr. Brewer, on the good news?
Yeah, the Home Rule charters that were required to mail out by law for consideration later and vote on May 3rd have been sent out Monday. It's a nice little letter from me and Mark Rousseau, who's the chair of the commission, and then you'll get a booklet like this. And some of you, if you, it's for every registered voter in the City of McLennan-Chisholm. So, some of you may have two or three of these coming to your house. If you would like to return a couple of them to city hall, by all means. If you're new here and haven't registered to vote, or you've just registered, by all means, come to city hall, we'll have some copies for you as well. There's a lot, a lot of things in here. We will have two more town halls to talk about it, April 9th and April 17th. There'll be more information coming out on that as well. So, as you read through it, and you have a question about one particular area, just make a note, and then come by the town hall, or reach out and email me, and I'll be glad to answer your question. Thank you.
Mr. Day.
Just a little update on a couple of projects I've been working on. I've been working on writing an ordinance for dark skies, and also working on ordinance for trails. If you have any ideas or inputs that you'd like to put before we put this out, I've been working on this for, I mean, about a year. It's a lot of work, a lot of research, a lot of, a lot of work's been done. It's kind of at the 90% phase, so if you want to send me a citizen comment to my email address regarding dark skies or the trail ordinance, and what you think might be helpful, I'm always happy to hear about it. Thank you.
Mr. Tucker?
I'm good, thank you.
So, Bev, so I do have one announcement. It actually just occurred to me that I will be starting a nine-part video, starting tomorrow. I'll address these each day, one at a time. So, tomorrow, we will discuss item number one on my video. With that, it is 8:42, we're adjourned.